This is the City of Jacksonville at our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Our agenda was properly posted. We do have a quorum. So I would like to call us to order. Our first item of business is an invocation by Pastor John, Peoples Church, John Atkinson. If you will stand with us and pray with us, and then we will do the pledge allegiance. Pastor John.
Would you join me in prayer? Father, we're grateful today for another day of life. We thank you for bringing us to this place. We thank you, Lord, for your hand of guidance in our lives each and every day. We ask, Lord, that you would continue that, guiding each decision that is made this evening, each discussion that takes place, Father. We pray that, Lord, each one of these that serves our city, and, Lord, gives their selves and their lives and the time with their families, Lord, to serve each one of us in this community. We pray you will bless them for that. Lord, we continue to lift up our police and fire and, Lord, all the emergency services personnel that serve us each and every day. We ask you to keep them safe and continue to be with them and their families. We thank you for all of these things, and we ask you to, Jesus.
Amen. If you'll join me in the pledges, first with the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. Our first item is some special presentations. Going back to the employer of the month, and that will be brought to you by Mr. James Hubbard, currently president of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, mayor of council. Obviously, we took a long break from this program. We started the employer of the month program, I think, in 2019, and for obvious reasons, we kind of slowed it down through 2020 as we were holding most of our meetings virtually. But it is extremely fitting that we recognize UT Health Jacksonville tonight as the July employer of the month, our first month back from our break of 2020. Deli Haley, the CEO of the hospital, and her team has done a phenomenal job. Obviously, led the charge through 2020, and we know everything that's had to tell. And we just thank you for that. Two hundred and forty wonderful employees at the hospital. They've added several new doctors recently. Michael Hales, their chief RA now, was recently added to the team. He's joined Rotary. And just, I mean, the guy's plugged in. He's a Jacksonville native already, even though he's new. He just really cares about this community. And you've made some real good improvements at the infrastructure of the hospital from the experience here. The fountain's working again, which looks gorgeous. They recently tore down two buildings, kind of ancillary structures in front of the hospital, but they cleaned it up there as well. So investment in their people, investment in their infrastructure, we can be more proud to recognize you tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you want to say anything?
No, very briefly, it is our pleasure to be a part of this community for the last number of two years. Again, as you kind of look around this ring when you start, on this end of those pictures, that's our legacy.
Right.
And that's our timeframe of this community. So it is our honor and our privilege to be recognized as the employer of the month.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Sure appreciate what y'all do over there. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear from concerned citizens. We cannot act on anything, but we can certainly listen. We limit your time to speak to the council is three minutes. I'll start a clock, and when you get close, I might say something. Hopefully, you're done by then. But we have two so far, but they're in no particular order, just the way that they were given to me. Our first one is Jack Sheridan. So if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, and then we'll start your three-minute timer.
All right, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jack Sheridan, and I thank y'all for holding me here at the secret. I'm representing the Marine Corps League. We've had a situation come up. A lot of the things we do, and y'all have seen that a couple of months ago on a sheet of paper, we have an honor guard. We retire flags when the American flag or the Texas flag become unserviceable. There's a procedure you go through, and we have a cylinder at the courthouse in Rust at the Veterans Memorial. It's a four-inch PVC pipe, four foot long, and it's full. We have over a half hundred American flags to retire. We would like to ask the city to be able to put a cylinder down at the memorial park here. We'd like to put a eight-inch about six foot, and we'll put a lock on it so nobody can get to it. But you just don't throw the ashes in a trash can, because you incinerate the flags, the ashes, and then you place them in a tomb or something like that. And that's following the protocol of disposing of them. And we're asking to be able to do that and to have our retirement ceremonies up here also. So that's all I'm asking. We're asking you right now, sir.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you, sir. You bet. Our second person to sign up is Sherri Brown. Is that correct? Yeah. If you'll come up and state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherri Brown, and I'm calling in reference to Republic Trash Company. I have had the city secretary receive my complaint, but what it is, is the trash trucks need to plug, and when they mash down the trash, all of the toxic waste comes right in front of our homes. I do have pictures of that. I did speak with Skey, but the problem suddenly just consists all over. Every Tuesday and Friday is the same thing. I poured bleach, I've done solvent, and it's in front of our homes, and it's very toxic. So I would thank you guys if you can at least get this problem rectified.
And you're at 421 Sherri?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a third one, Regina Brown, follow-up on a special use permit. Are you on the, is that the public hearing?
No.
No? Okay. Very good. Then come state your name and talk to us for three minutes, please.
No, I won't talk three minutes. I was following up because I noticed that there was a special request on the agenda tonight, so I called Sylvie today to ask him whether to respond to my current request. Of course, he says, no, you cannot. I said, yes, the zoning. I said, did you receive the information? And I said, by grade, yes, grade, you noted it to me. Cool. I come back today asking what are the criteria for a special permit? Somebody can just email me or call me, it doesn't matter, but I would like to hear from somebody. Because when I speak to Sylvie, his response is just pushing me away. He's never called me. Initially, I was calling him every day, and I stopped doing that, and I came to a meeting last month. And so today was my first time calling him, following up from the meeting.
This is the one on the agenda?
His response is to say, you know, we're not doing it, and people like that. But I want a better explanation.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Does someone have your email address?
Okay. Perfect. I'll address her concern during my comments.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else would like to speak that didn't sign up? We want to give you a chance.
Excuse me. I know I was supposed to be here every conference that we make.
Okay.
I'm Wesley Jean Cannon, and I would have put in for a special use for business to live in there.
Is this the one?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to have a public hearing pretty quickly, and there'll be a time where I'll ask for people that want to comment for or against it to come, and that would be the proper time for you to come back, if you don't mind. Yeah.
Is it tonight?
It is tonight. Yes. Pretty quick. Yeah, it's pretty quick. You might, you might, sit on the front row so you can come back. Okay. Okay. Very good. Okay. Item number six is to hear and receive input on modifications to the zoning ordinance regarding sign regulations. So do we want to, you want to say anything about that?
Okay.
Okay. So at this time, I would like to open the public hearing for anybody that wanted to come and talk in favor of or against our proposed signing ordinance. Okay? Seeing neither, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Item number seven is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance modifying the zoning ordinance requiring, regarding our sign regulations.
Yes, council. This item has been discussed multiple months. This is a joint project between Jedco and the city. Mark Priestner with Planning Concepts out of Tyler has been our consultant and has worked through this signed ordinance. There have been multiple meetings involving council and Jedco board members, independent from the small working, or as part of the small working group, to look at it. This is the final ordinance. You will see it at your place tonight. There was about seven little typographical changes and clarifications that were made. So when we make the motion, if you'll make the motion to approve the one that's at your desk tonight, it has been sent to Greg, so he will be able to get the appropriate one posted. Planning zoning did hear this ordinance and took comments on it as well. There was no comments from the public during the P&amp;Z meeting, and P&amp;Z did recommend approval. And this ordinance has been reviewed by the Norman Law Firm.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion, and then we'll, if there's any discussion, we'll follow that.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance concerning signage.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McCray.
Second.
By Councilman Hubert Robinson. Now, is there any discussion we need to have before we vote?
Councilman, if I could just add a couple of things real quick. There will be a lunch and learn with city staff tomorrow to talk about the implementation process with this, as well as Jedco is going to handle the outreach coordination with the businesses to go over these changes. I think, as we discussed during this process, there will be an implementation period of sixty or ninety days where we will tell the companies or the businesses that may have a sign that is non-conforming that it needs to be removed by this date. In addition, there is lots of availability for special circumstances, such as the school district, or one of our hospitals, or any large business that has multiple signs. They can actually request a sign plan that can cover all of them. So while this sign ordinance will have some effect, I think, long-term, this is the best situation for getting control of our signs and moving this community forward in that manner.
Very good. Any other comments or discussion?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Are we going to potentially revisit, like, in six months and see what's working, what's not? Do we need to make adjustments or anything?
Absolutely. We can do that on any ordinance at any time.
Okay.
And I would highly recommend that, once we get through six months, maybe a little quick, unless we find a glowing problem.
Right.
Nine to twelve months, since we're doing a three-month rollout phase to give people time to take care of it.
Okay.
And in the months coming forward, you'll hear some more zoning ordinance changes. And again, those are some of the same situations where we may have to make a modification here or there.
Might have to tweak some things.
Yes, absolutely will.
So do y'all have that somewhere that we can see the modification?
They'll be posted online.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Our next item is to hear and receive input on a request for a special use permit to have a residence in a commercial building at 569 North Ragstale Street. So this is a public hearing, so I will open the floor to a public hearing. If you want to come and speak in favor of or against, now's your time. So I think this will be the proper time. You still want to talk in favor or against?
Favor.
Okay. Save the steps. Save the steps, you're in favor, okay? Anybody else want to speak in favor of or against? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Item number nine is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance allowing for a special use permit of residents in a commercial zone at 569 North Ragstale Street.
Yes, council. This, as you recall, was put on the April agenda. The requestor asked that it be removed, since the city was in the process of revamping some of the zoning ordinance. The requestor has now requested it be back, and action be taken on it. Staff does recommend denial of the SUP. Probably the largest reason is health safety code for that business. There are requirements for a residential structure, talking about ingress and egress, especially in the bedrooms and sleeping quarters, and this commercial building does not meet the health safety code for ingress and egress, especially for a residential structure. There are some other technical issues that are problems with this request, but from the discussions we had Thursday at the workshop, I think the biggest concern that staff has is the health safety concerns of turning a commercial business into a residential structure.
Health safety being windows and...
Residential occupancy.
Yeah, residential occupancy, ingress and egress out of the building, the residential requirements for kitchens and bathrooms and showers and stuff like that. It is a commercial building. Not saying it cannot be made into, meet the residential codes, but it does not meet the residential codes today.
Is there a way, if the residential, I mean, if a blueprint has submitted, if plans are submitted, you know, based upon final inspection, if it meets residential codes, is there a way for us to move forward with it that way?
Yes. You could issue the SUP with conditions that it must meet all residential health and safety codes and permitting requirements, and the SUP will not be issued until that time.
Exactly.
That absolutely can be done, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the SUP, subject to it meeting the residential occupancy codes for health and safety.
Okay. We've got a motion on the floor by Councilman Tim McCray to approve it. We have a second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Is there any other discussion? I'd like to ask Mr. Priest, does it meet the ordinance also? Or we got a problem there, too? I've kind of heard both. I'm not an expert.
I'm Mark Priestner, Planning Concepts, Tyler. The code requires, allows an SUP for an incidental use that is customarily incidental. From a planning standpoint, it doesn't meet the definition of customarily incidental. Customarily incidental would be a use that you would typically find in any other business like that throughout an area. You normally see living quarters as part of twenty-four-hour operations, healthcare facilities, security facilities, things like that, where you may have some kind of quarters like fire stations do. That would be a customarily incidental. You know, the biggest issue from just a planning standpoint is that, you know, you're opening up the possibility of, does any strip center end up having an SUP for a residential in it? And you start having conflicts between commercial and residential. You know, from a land use perspective, you know, that's where I'm coming from, and that's where staff's recommendation is on denial, is it's just really based on, it's not a, it's not a customarily incidental use, and it creates more problems than it helps.
Wouldn't it have been better for her to have asked to have the entire property rezoned residential? I mean, that's such, that's such a mixed-use neighborhood.
Yes. And it is, but, you know, you go back to, if it had been planned and designed more mixed use and not just straight commercial, you know, that would be more appropriate.
I mean, at one point, at one point, that street was probably a lot more commercial than it is today. Just, you know, changing demographics, things like that.
And really, a better option, you know, from a planning standpoint, is probably to change it to a multifamily designation and use the business as a home-based business. You know, it, there's just different, you know, again, but you get back into code issues and, you know, was it built as a habitable, you know, sleeping kind of quarters or not?
We would have to, that would have to be adhered to. But I do have one question. I mean, because I look at this as being on the fringe of downtown. I know it's a little bit out, a little far for considering a downtown address, but it's pretty close, on the fringe. If we had someone looking at putting a loft over their, over their commercial business downtown, we would probably be looking at that favorably, would we not?
Yeah, we probably would.
And that's not a twenty-four-seven business, and I don't think, it may be a little stretch, but I don't see it as a far stretch.
Well, the difference now is that, under our current code, you could not do a loft downtown.
Correct.
It's going to require a change in the ordinance to allow those.
Or an SUP.
So the reasoning behind part of the recommendation on denial, from my standpoint, is that our code doesn't really allow that right now. The use of the SUP is intended for a customarily incidental use, not a true mixed-use designation. We don't have that currently. And I think that your point is that, you know, we, that's, that's a section that needs to be redeveloped that allows for and provides for those types of uses.
Well, just for clarification, if we issued an SUP, that does not transfer to subsequent owners. This, it becomes only our, to subsequent tenants.
Well, technically, it goes, an SUP, if it's done on the timeframe, it goes with the property as long as that use is consistent. If the use does, it ceases to be used in that way. Now, one of the conditions of the SUP requirement in our current code is that it can only be used by an occupant of the building. So, so only a person that has a business can use that SUP for living quarters in that same structure. That property cannot be leased out to somebody else. It can't be, you know, a completely separate entity that's used for something.
Only one of the owners could actually occupy.
Correct. Or somebody that has a business in that center.
That property is real small, and I don't see any other business going in. We've got two checkers.
Well, and again, and I, you know, I don't disagree with that. It's just really more a matter of looking at, what does your ordinance say right now, and what is it currently say? And, you know, to me, the bigger red flag is that, you know, those are sections that need to be addressed and changed, because that is sort of an extension of downtown. And really, you know, we need to look closely at that core downtown zoning and what it allows for. But under, you know, this is strictly under current codes, the way they are right now, the application of an SUP as it exists right now. You know, my, my opinion is that it really doesn't meet the intent of what the SUP is intended for, for this purpose, but, you know, I'm not saying that that shouldn't be readdressed, and I think that that type of mixed use is something we need to look very closely at.
I mean, that was, that was, you know, when she was here in April, I'm the one that looked at her and go, hang loose just a minute, because we're working on some stuff. I mean, these are the kind of discussions that we're having internally, and when I look at that neighborhood, when Tim McCray looks at that neighborhood, you know, I see community funeral home, I see the other funeral home, I see Sylvie Mae's, the old seafood place, I see the churches, and I see them all mixed in with houses. And then I see your building, right there. I mean, it looks more commercial than, you know, the funeral home. It looks, I mean, it looks like it's in an old house, with everything up there. And that's why I take a more fluid approach to it, and I think all of us did today, going, you know, there's, it's the economic viability of that whole neighborhood, bringing up everybody's property values would be my long-term goal, but, you know, the whole, where we are right now on, you know, do we, do we replat that whole neighborhood? And resell that whole neighborhood for different uses? It's not what it was fifty years ago.
I'm sorry? Special use permit? Again, you know, I'm strictly going by what, the special use permit, how it applies today and what the, you know, if it's applicable to this property.
You know, Mark, to Rob's point, I mean, we can always look at that neighborhood and see, you know, if we want to zone it differently or anything in the future, but to me, I think this lady needs occupancy as soon as possible, if she can, and that, to me, is what the special use permit's all about, is...
It is, and, you know, I mean, my additional recommendation on the conditions would probably be that you put a timeframe on it. And so, because, you know, the process is taking time to get all of these codes updated, and, you know, I think you guys are right on point in what that's going to be. If we were doing a future land use plan right now, that whole area would be some sort of transit, transition from downtown into, you know, residential, commercial, adaptive reuse, something. And it makes sense to go that direction. You know, what I would recommend is that you put some kind of condition on it that, you know, whether it's, you know, if she ceases to use it or put a timeframe on it, knowing that, you know, over this next year, we're going to have those changes in place, that then that zoning will be applicable and, you know, the SUP will be...
Basically, you're saying like a timeline as far as her bringing it to code, and then...
Well, I think the code requirements are regardless, because they're health safety.
Right. That's what, yeah.
You know, if, assuming that this all goes forward, you know, just making sure that the SUP is not for, in the permanent...
Oh, yeah. So basically, we, we could, we could, if I were to modify my motion to extend this SUP only to her, and is that kind of what...
That, I mean, that may be, but, I mean, my recommendation would be to say, you know, for three years, or, you know, give it a five-year, a three-year, you know, something that's...
Yeah, I don't know if I would do that. She may want to live there twenty more years. I don't know. I mean, I don't know what her plans are, but, but I can understand that we might not want it to continue in, in that type of permitted basis.
Then I would definitely do that. Again, under the SUP, the way it is now, it can't just be leased out or rented to anybody. It has to be an occupant of that building that has a business there, because that's how that SUP in mode currently is working.
Which is, which is somewhat restraining in itself.
Exactly. Right. So it's pretty restrictive. And if we know we're addressing zoning in the near future, we all know we are, we've discussed it multiple times, it's in the process, the SUP may not be required if the zoning is changed and there is allowed to have mixed use. So if you wanted to put a, it's going to the individual. If you wanted to put a time limit on there, we're going to know if it's going to be allowed or not before the time limit ends. So you have the ability to actually do both sides of that. Do it for a five-year period and to the individual that requested the SUP, and then that way, if the zoning doesn't allow it by permit, it would have to come back to the city council, and then you would be able to address it at that time.
Honestly, I don't really like that, because I don't want to tell her she can move in there and change the code to make it residentially occupied, and then she has to live over the next possible five years with the idea she could get booted out. I just don't, I can't go for that.
Those are, those are options. I'm not, I'm not making recommendations. Those are just the options that you have.
But in a best-case scenario, if we pass this, that doesn't mean she can move in Friday. There's a ton of work she's got to do to get there.
It's going to be a significant, significant... And I think the reality is, like Greg was saying, hey, you know, that area is a transition area, there's no doubt. You can look at the uses that are in there. You know, the only reason that it's got, you know, different, you know, a lot of these, back in the day, residential was allowed in commercial, and, you know, there was probably only two designations back when a lot of that area was developed. So, you know, it's time to relook at that, and I, you know, again, I don't, I don't think that it's not, that it's necessarily an incompatible use, you know, it's just that we got to look at that structure, what is the code today, and how does that...
And I do agree totally with that. The only thing that, different that I think I feel is that, is that if we rezoned it and zoned it the way that it works out, great, hey, everything's great then. But if we didn't, I don't want that over her head that...
But again, I think a recommendation, we tied it to her, again, it's going to be restrictive, because it has to be somebody that has a business in there, or that SUP no longer...
She's going to have to invest quite a bit to bring it up to the kind of code it's going to take to move in as a residence, so...
So, Tim, if you wanted to modify your motion, you could say, the motion you had issued to Mrs. Wesley Cannon, and just add her name specifically, and then it ties it directly to her.
Okay. I'm absolutely good with that, and I will modify my motion to specifically name her as the SUP recipient.
Okay. So we have a motion that's been modified to specifically issue the SUP directly to her and only her, and we got a second for that. Any other discussion that we might need to have?
And I do agree totally with that. I, the only thing that, different that I think I feel is that, is that if we rezoned it and zoned it the way that it works out, great, hey, everything's great then. But if we didn't, I don't want that over her head that.
But again, I think a recommendation, we tied it to her, again, it's going to be restrictive, because it has to be somebody that has a business in there, or that SUP no longer.
She's going to have to invest quite a bit to bring it up to the kind of code it's going to take to move in as a residence, so.
So, Tim, if you wanted to modify your motion, you could say, the motion you had issued to Mrs. Wesley Cannon, and just add her name specifically, and then it ties it directly to her.
I'm, I'm absolutely good with that, and I will modify my motion to specifically name her as the SUP recipient.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been modified to specifically issue the SUP directly to her and only her, and we got a second to that. Any other discussion that we might need to have? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 10 is our Consent Agenda. Items under the Consent Agenda require little or no deliberations, and you can see those there. It's approval of the minutes, and then the approval of seller surplus equipment, furniture, and fixtures. So I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion of that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 11 is to discuss and consider with possible action approving the appraisal district's budget.
Counsel, this is a requirement of the appraisal district to submit their budget to all of their bodies that they work with, and staff is recommending approval of the budget.
Okay. You've heard that, so I will entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make a motion to approve the appraisal.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson, a second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Five-oh. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action granting of utility easements under Lake Jacksonville.
Counsel, as the agenda packet shows, this is for two utility easements to be installed under Lake Jacksonville. This is to meet new state law that requires utility lines be a certain height above water, bodies of water, or under them. Encore has elected to move these two that are in your packet to be underwater easements.
All right.
Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make a motion that we grant the utility easements under Lake Jacksonville.
Have a motion by Councilman Tim McCray.
Second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 13 is to discuss and consider with possible action approval of revised hotel occupancy tax grant guidelines and applications.
Yes, counsel, you see the updated guidelines and application in your packet. These were updated from Thursday's workshop, where we put a co-op requirement for advertising dollars. And so staff is recommending approval for these to be adopted for, beginning October 1, 2021, with the understanding that the bull bash for this year will be funded under last year's guidelines, since it was approved in last year, even though it may be happening after the budget year is adopted.
Okay. So you'll see that in your packet. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the revised hotel occupancy tax grant guidelines and application.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McCray. Any discussion? I looked, that co-op is 25/7.
I saw it.
Yeah, I looked for it too, because we, we discussed several co-op percentages. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 14 is to discuss and consider with possible action a reimbursement resolution.
So, counsel, this is for the potential debt service that the city is entertaining to repair streets. So what this allows us to do is reimburse the city, once we receive the debt service proceeds for any expenses up to $500,000 for this particular project. If the city does not go out for the debt service, then this resolution has no meaning or value, and we can't do it for a future period of time. This is specifically to the item that we discussed a couple times for the debt service. And we will discuss this in detail at the budget workshop. We did get the $11.2 million from the financial advisor, and it still looks like that's a very doable situation, but we will discuss that at the budget workshop.
Okay. So hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take action to reimburse the resolution.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen to approve that.
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 15 is to discuss and consider with possible action entering into a tender agreement with FCCI Insurance Company, Assurity for Cherokee Painting and Sand Blasting Inc., agreeing to its proposal to substitute GM Roberts, Inc., Doing Business as Corrosive Eliminators, as completion contractor for completion of work under contract dated July 15, 2020, for construction work on a project known as the Water Treatment Plant Clearwell Rehabilitation, wherein FCCI shall pay the difference between the unpaid balance of the original contract and the cost of completion of work. Now that we all understand what it's about.
So let me give you the Cliff Notes version of that.
Please, please do.
This is allowing the city to go against the first contractor's bonding company to complete this job. The first contractor was unable to complete the bond and has abandoned the job, and now their bonds are taking care of the completion of this project. The city will still be out the original contract amount, and then any overages will be paid by the bonding company. And this item, and then the next item, are dealing 100% with the legal requirements from the city attorney's office to get this addressed.
Did we pay a vote for that?
No, no, no.
It was partial payments.
Yeah, we still have the vast majority of the contract dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Do we need to do, is it two separate motions?
Yes, it is two separate motions.
So the first one you'll need to...
Intending, tender agreement.
Agreement to go into discussions with the insurance company, is that?
No, what we need to do is make a motion to approve item 15 as read by the mayor.
I'll make, I'll tell you what, I will make a motion to approve item 15 as read by the mayor.
And, you know, as mayor, I will second that motion, since I read that. So, okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tim McCray, a second by Mayor Randy Gorham. Is there any discussion that we need to have?
I just have one question. Steve, do we need to take a record vote on this, or is a normal vote acceptable?
Which would you prefer? Okay, record vote, so Councilman Rob Goen, Councilman Tim McCray.
Aye.
Mayor Randy Gorham, aye. Councilman Hubert Robinson, and Councilwoman Mindy Gallick.
Aye.
Aye, so we have a 5-0 vote. By the record, it passed. Item number 16 is to authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate and for a city manager to execute a completion contract with GM Roberts, Inc., Doing Business as Corrosion Eliminators, as completion contractor using Standard Engineer Joint Contract Documents Committee, EJCDC, form whereby completion contractor shall complete construction work on a project known as the Water Treatment Plant Clearwell Rehabilitation.
So. Item, item number two on the exact same discussion that we had earlier.
So I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item number 16 as read by the mayor.
Very good. We have a motion by Tim McCray. I will second that, since I read that one again. The second is by Mayor Randy Gorham. Is there any discussion that needs to be had? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Let's do record vote.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. Record vote, Councilman Rob Goen. Councilman Tim McCray.
Aye.
Mayor Randy Gorham.
Aye.
Councilman Hubert Robinson.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Mindy Gallick.
Aye.
Aye. Carries 5-0, record vote. Item number 17, I think we're going to...
Yes, so let's go ahead and read it, and then I'll...
Discuss and consider with possible action the Gum Creek Water Supply Contract Extension.
So, counsel, I would like to consider this under executive session, under attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
We will take action on it or discuss it publicly after we consult with the attorney.
Okay.
But instead of going into executive session twice, I'd just like to move it to after executive session, if counsel's okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
So item number 18 is the city manager's report.
Yep, so I just have a couple announcements. The Tomato Fest was very, very successful this year, record attendance. Thank you to all the staff and all the employees that helped with the setup, all the power distribution system, as well as City Central. I think City Central went fantastic, it was hot. We'll, we'll do some improvements for cooling stations and additional water and additional staff for that event, towards not an all-day event for those people, but our staff did a fantastic job with that. We have had the post-action meeting, both internal and with the chamber, and the both of those went good, and we should be ready to go for next year without any problem. Do have two announcements. First announcement is that there'll be a COVID vaccination clinic for adolescents age 12 to 17 to be held at the Jacksonville Public Library tomorrow on Wednesday, 7:14, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. No appointment is necessary. The next announcement that we have is Splash Day for the Jacksonville Fire Department will be Saturday, July the 24th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They'll have hot dogs and snow cones, and then they'll have the ladder truck out there to do that. As you recall, last year, we were unable to have this event, and the fire department is ready to continue having that event for the kids in the community. So those are the two announcements I have. We did have a business open up, I think, yesterday or today. Chief Fortner is one that made me perfectly aware of it, is Harbor Freight has now opened up, and Chief Fortner may be the most excited person in this room about Harbor Freight opening up. I think he's already was their first customer, or one of their first customers, so they did open up today, and we're excited to have them in town, and that is all I have.
Very good. Counsel, anybody have anything you want to say before we go into? Okay. Okay, so we will go into closed executive session. City Hall Conference Room for Open Meetings Act protects as government code section 551.071, consultation with attorneys pending possible litigation, and 551.072, real property, and then we will reconvene to open session for any action if necessary. So we will go into closed executive session at 6:42. Okay, so we are back, we are reconvening to open session for any action if necessary at 7:44, and we will go back now and pick up item number 17, discuss and consider with possible action the Gum Creek Water Supply Contract Extension.
Yes, counsel, so we have received communication from Gum Creek Water Supply Corporation on their plan. And so I want to make sure everybody understands we're talking about two different contracts. We're talking about the regulatory water and the wet water. The city of Jacksonville will always sell Gum Creek wet water on, on-demand contract, without question. The issue at hand is the regulatory water to meet the TCU requirements for their capacity. Gum Creek has indicated that they are in the process of drilling a test well. And so what my recommendation or motion is, is that the city of Jacksonville accept the extension contract, the extension, the one-year extension to December 31, 2021, therefore giving Gum Creek 60 days beyond the date that they said they would have their test well results. And at that time, we feel that the spirit of the contract extension will not, if the well is successful, there will not be an issue. If the well is not successful, they have not contract, they have not, in the spirit of the contract, negotiated in the way that we think they should. And so we want to make that effective December 31, 2021, dealing with the capacity portion of the contract, the regulatory water.
Okay. Does anybody want to make that as a motion? Can you make a, does anybody want to make that as a motion, just like he just...
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we make December 31, 2021, as the contract end date for the Gum Creek Water.
Okay, real motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion that we need to have? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We have one more?
We do, here we go.
I got to break it down.
The, the second one is authorize the city manager to spend up to $20,000 partnering with Jedco to enter into a contract and do the required due diligence process for purchasing the old Travis Clinic located on the loop in Jacksonville.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Mayor and counsel, I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to spend up to $20,000 partnering with Jedco to pursue the purchase of the known-as Travis Clinic off of Highway 204, Jacksonville.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Tim McCray, second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion on that item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. I think that's all we had out of the executive session. So I, we will stand adjourned at 7:48. Thank you.